Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, November twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three at five thirty-five P. M. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez. Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Mayor Santinez.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Sanchez?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Koops, seconded by Councilmember Dutton, to excuse the absence of Councilmember Sanchez. Without objection, that will be the order. All right, item three, Mr. Stewart.
Two items for closed session tonight. First is conference of legal counsel, initiation litigation. We have one case for discussion. The second is conference of real property negotiator, property in question is one seven six three four, Bellflower Boulevard. Negotiator is myself. Negotiating party is Vanessa Delgado, under negotiation price in terms of payment.
Does anyone have any conflicts on these two items?
Mr. Mayor, I have a property within the area of three A, so I'll recuse myself from that initial item.
Okay, Mayor Protem Koops is recusing himself on item three A. Anyone else? All right, seeing there's no one here from the audience, with that, we will recess to closed session. Good evening. The regular meeting of Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at seven oh-two P. M. We're reconvening from closed session, and there are no reportable actions taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez. Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Mayor Santinez.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Sanchez?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Koops, seconded by Councilmember Dutton, to excuse the absence of Councilmember Sanchez. Without objection, that will be the order. Tonight's invocation will be led by Mayor Protem Dan Koops, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Mr. Jim Delonge, our Director of Economic Development. Please rise.
Please bow with me for a word of prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening hour to give you thanks. Season of thankfulness, and we all want to be mindful of that kind of activity. Be with us as we deliberate those items in front of us, give us the knowledge to do the right thing for our city. We also want to remember our first responders, both locally, our police and our fire, but also nationally, that those that are protecting us throughout the country. Be with us throughout this evening as we do our best to serve our city. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart, address the flag, and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Jim. City council announcements, I'm gonna start off. The annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony is scheduled to take place this Friday, December first, at six thirty P. M. in downtown Bellflower, near Friendship Square. Local residents and neighboring communities are invited to this free event filled with carvadas, crabs, and real snow sledding. Santa Claus will make a special appearance and meet with children to take a photo and listen to their holiday wishes. For more information, please call five six two eight zero four one four two four, extension two two six one. Mayor Protem Koops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city is currently in the process of creating a Parks and Recreation Master Plan to provide a modern version of the parks and recreation system in the city of Bellflower. The plan will provide guidance for future improvements in the development of new parks, recreational facilities, and programs. The next two workshops will be held at Sims Park Auditorium this week, Tuesday, which is tomorrow, November twenty-eighth, and Thursday, day after tomorrow, November thirtieth, from six P. M. to eight P. M. Come out and learn more and provide your input about the future of Bellflower's parks and recreation, the programs and the facilities. For more information, you can visit the website at www.bellflowerparksplan.com, or simply call the city at five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two two six seven. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Show your holiday spirit by decorating the outside of your home and competing in the City of Bellflower's Holiday Home Decoration Contest. Nominations are now open, and all entries must be received by four P. M. this Thursday, November thirtieth of this year. The contest committee will be judging the nominated properties the week of December fourth. The winning homes will be recognized with a lawn sign and a certificate of recognition from the mayor of this and the city council. This program is open to all Bellflower residents in single-family homes only. For more information, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension twenty-one oh three. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Ray. Councilmember Wendy Morse.
Thank you, Mary. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their next monthly morning mingle, which will take place tomorrow morning, Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, from nine A. M. to ten A. M. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at five six two eight six seven one seven four four. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Wendy. Tonight, we have one presentation. It's an update on Bellflower Connect. Mr. Stewart.
Jim, why don't you make an introduction for us, please, tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we have with us Keith Alexis, the C. E. O. of I. C. C. N., who is going to give you an update of Bellflower Connect, where we're at, where we're going, and how things are proceeding. So I'm gonna turn it over to Keith, and he's got a slide presentation to go along with his update.
All right, Mr. Alexis, the floor is yours.
Sir, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you very much, Jim, and team, and also the public. We're gonna go through this rather quickly, but please feel free to ask any questions once we're through it. So, our goal, as we presented about a year, year and a half ago, was to enable connectivity, not just simply from one aspect of the city, from an income perspective, but really focused on low income, as well as connecting other parts of the city and then expanding beyond that, right? So becoming an intelligent city, and so the infrastructure that we proposed and continue to develop really has actually been that. Where we are today is that we've put in a number of different elements of that infrastructure. We're going a little bit slow to make sure that we test everything adequately, that we get feedback from the community. So, for example, we were earlier this year, we were part of the Bellflower Job Fair that went on at Sims Park. Part of that process is that we are also doing a workforce development, so that we are hiring local people within the community to be able to maintain the system, so we're not trucking in, you know, people when there's a customer service issue, when there's an outage. It's actually local community members that we are training technically to be able to support and sustain the system over the long term. Part of that system will also be portals that will enable people to have access to things such as telehealth and other kinds of applications and information while they're walking around the city. The other part, from an investment perspective, we are one hundred percent committed to doing not just this network, but also expanding beyond it within the community. So there are three elements that we are deploying. One part of that is the technology, the other part of that is the sustainability, and then the last piece of that is, of course, the workforce development, and we're working with nonprofit community elements to be able to physically do that. So from hiring to also using the technical resources locally to do so. We're also using the infrastructure. So one of the things that you often hear about when, you know, the magical term about bridging the digital divide, and how do you do that, and last mile, and these kinds of things, without getting too technical, we have had a solution that helps to create that solution, that problem, cause that, solve that problem. And by doing so, we also then partner with our bigger partners, like a Crown Castle, for example, or Frontier. We've even licensed some of our technology to the likes of A. T. And T. So we work closely with all of our large partners, bringing them into the community as well. So this is not just an element that is brought to you by I. C. C. There are a number of bigger providers that work with us to be able to extend the amount of infrastructure to be able to support the number of people that we have on the network. And part of that process, and this is where we work very closely with the Economic Development Group, with Jim and his team, on tracking and making sure that the level of performance is definitely there, right? Because obviously, no one's gonna use a network that really doesn't perform at world-class speeds. And so we've done tens of thousands of dollars worth of site surveys. We know where every residential home is, whether or not they are in a high-rise or in an individual residence. We can estimate the amount of performance that's gonna happen within each of those environments as well. And then, of course, we then do a number of different tests to validate that also, right? So, and then the other part of that is that we also look at it from the standpoint of different people within the community at different levels. So we firmly believe that it is good business to do good. So while on one hand, the program may initially focus on low-income residents, we also know that there are people within the community that are working-class poor that just can't afford fifty, a hundred dollars a month for broadband. And so we've come up with a program that we can allow for broadband at nineteen ninety-nine per user, and we're even targeting something that's even possibly to get down into the sub-ten-dollar range as well, right? And those will be based on performance metrics. We wanna make sure every child, from a school perspective, has access to connectivity that's as easy as going to a water fountain, or just walking down the street, streetlights, et cetera, and it becomes basically a basic utility throughout the community as well. The other part of the network ecosystem, so what you just saw was really how do we connect to a residential environment? The other part that we're doing is this umbrella over the city as well. And so what that means, and really in a simple term, I'm sure you're all familiar with Wi-Fi technology, you know, on your phones, or if you go to a hotspot, like at Starbucks, or Panera, or something like that. We create what we call these lily pads, so much bigger hotspots, right? So it covers a full city block at the end of the day. And so what we're doing with the main part of Bellflower Boulevard is being able to have the whole, most of Bellflower Boulevard covered. We will also be covering all of the parks, common areas, anywhere people congregate, so that way we can get large numbers of people online at any point in time. So they don't necessarily have to use their data plans all the time. They can actually use broadband throughout the city. And that's part of the reason why the network is called Bellflower Connect, because it is focused as a community kind of network at the end of the day, right? And this is something we do across the country. So Bellflower is one of six cities that's going up right now. We have eight other cities international that are also going up, and then we have twenty-five cities on our waitlist, and that includes the Bronx, New York, Pittsburgh, and a number of others that we're working with to do the exact same thing. So I think I'll skip over this slide. It gets a little bit technical, but when you look at the physical pieces that will be used in the city, we started getting some of the physical units in. So what's gonna happen over the next couple of months? We will start selecting, as we've gotten a few names from the Economic Development Group, of individuals that are ready to be on the system. Right now, we have a new antenna on the roof of this building, and that antenna will go live in the early part of January. Once we have that live, we'll be able to do field tests, right? So we'll select some specific end-users, and we'll test with them. Part of that test that we're doing isn't just simply, does it work and does it connect, but it'll be usability. We'll ask them questions about how easy was it to set up? Do you need color-coded cables? Do you need bigger instructions? And sort of walk through that process, and then improve it when we're ready to go full-till across the whole community as well. So the final product that you're going to see across the whole of Bellflower is gonna look like this, and I apologize for all of the acronyms. But basically, think of it as a large umbrella, a multi-layered umbrella. So you'll have Wi-Fi at the street level, across the city. You'll have technology, you may have heard of C. B. R. S., it's cellular technology, or private L. T. E., right? So that will also be part of the technology. It's a little bit longer range. And then you'll have this weird technology called TV white space. What TV white space is, is really for emergency kinds of applications. So your public works will have access to this frequency, so would your police departments and other environments, right? If you have CCTV camera systems around the city, it'll be a completely separate private network for city use at any point in time as well. So one of the things, just two more slides, one of the things that, from a status perspective, when we started the program, we laid out a timeline for deployment, and to be quite frank, we are behind that timeline, right? Obviously, everyone's familiar with the supply chain issues that have been going on. They've been sort of plaguing the industry. And then this year, our partner, which I'm also from Erickson, has run into those similar kinds of issues, and so the units that we were using from Erickson has been delayed, and so we're still waiting for some of those so that we can do our first initial test and first initial deployment, which will come in in the December timeframe. So we will get caught up rather quickly. And like I said before, this isn't simply affecting the city of Bellflower. It's, you know, we've got several projects in Maryland, in Baltimore, that we're working on. We've got about forty or fifty thousand residents that we're connecting through roughly about five or six other cities that it's also impacting. So what we've done is, from a resolution standpoint, and you don't have to necessarily go through all of it, but from a resolution standpoint, what we've done is to focus on launching our own cellular solution, as well as some of the new TV white space. So it'll replace the Erickson gear. It'll come out in that April timeframe. What this will allow us to do is to speed up the deployment, so instead of it taking two to three years, as we originally estimated, we will be finished with the complete deployment by the end of twenty twenty-four. And so that's part of our objective, and why we wanted to make sure that we came in and communicated not just the changes, but some of the delays, and also some of the, how are we gonna fix those moving forward as well? And that's the end of the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Alexis, for your report. I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned about workforce development. So how many employees locally have you hired so far?
So we've hired one. We have, from that job fair, we have twenty-five applications, and of that, we're gonna eventually...
The one, the job fair at Sims Park?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. The job fair at Sims Park, which we provided the broadband for all five, six hundred people that also showed up at that event. And so our target is roughly ten residents. That will also satisfy for...
Once the system is fully implemented.
Once the full system's fully implemented, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
The reason it's ten is that basically, we quadrant off the city and say, everyone is able to support roughly within a half a mile to a mile from where they live. So therefore, you get out of the issues of busing, and, you know, if they don't have a car for some reason, they're still able to get to where we need them, and thereby giving them sort of a step up from a ladder perspective.
That's good, okay. In terms of sustainability, can you talk more about that? So, for example, let's say, once a system is fully operational,
Yes.
are you gonna be maintaining the system for how long? Are you gonna be maintaining it?
Absolutely, absolutely. So fortunately, or unfortunately, you will not get rid of us. We're gonna be here for as long. We do have a fairly lengthy contract.
Well, as long as you're doing a good job.
Well, exactly, exactly correct, right? So from a sustainability standpoint, our intention is probably, you know, fifty to a hundred years to be here, to grow with the city. But when we look at sustainability, we're not just looking at it from, you know, our support, right? We're looking at it from a monetary standpoint, and we firmly believe that it's good business to do good. Because we're setting up the network from a closed network standpoint, what that simply means is that unlike an A. T. And T. of Verizon, a Spectrum, you basically get a connection pipe, and you can do anything you want with it, right? And so you put it in, you pay for the infrastructure, but Google sells you ad, Facebook sells you ads, and you never see that return. What we've done here and in other places is to create what we call a closed network. So that means that all of the information within the city stays within the city. So we can control, if we gave every student in the city a modem, the city can decide, well, this is the content they want flowing over their network, this is what they want limited. If we decide that we don't want Netflix flowing over that network unless Netflix pays to be part of the community, we can actually very well do that. So part of the monetization side of things is to say that the data, the information that the community creates really belongs to the community. Why have Facebook monetize it, right, and make twenty, thirty billion dollars? So if they want access to your content, they have to pay for access to your content, and that's only by your approval.
I see, okay.
So your information is more secure. It's not just out there everywhere. And then because we're able to monetize the network in that format, we're able, that's how we're able to subsidize everyone's connection within the city as well.
Other than the supply chain issue, are there any obstacles that you're able to address in implementing the system?
Sure, there'll definitely be some other obstacles. There will be some spots that we will have that you just, because we're using what's called fixed wireless, there'll be places where maybe there are too many thick trees, or it's behind a building, and so the signal propagation may not necessarily get to that one resident that's there. And what we'll try to do is add other antennas around the city to try to get around those obstacles as best we possibly can. But we're estimating there's probably gonna be about probably three to five percent of the population where they're just physically in a location that is a desert. And then we can come back and decide, how do we wanna resolve that? Do we need a new antenna to go in that location beyond what we're doing? Or if an actual fiber line is needed for that location? But yes, those will be some issues that we will run into.
I see. If I recall correctly, we launched the system in May of this year, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I think back then, our estimate was two years, and you're saying now that it should be fully implemented by the end of twenty twenty-four?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's good.
That is correct, yes, yes.
I understand that there's some, because of the supply chain issue, the rollout was kind of slower in the first phase, but I'm sure that you can catch up in phase two, phase three, and phase four eventually.
Absolutely, absolutely. And part of this is that we are really taking our time to understand and have a conversation with the community through the Economic Development Group, in understanding, you know, who is where and how we engage with the community. So we've been at several events. I mean, we've been at the, you know, like the market, for example, which happened today. We get feedback through the marketing department here on how we should tweak things. So our goal is not just to sort of just throw things out there, hope it works, and then disappear. So we are ourselves going a little bit slower, making sure we test things, making sure we validate as well.
Yeah, okay. I understand that, I think economic development has about over three hundred applications for phase one? Okay, so when do you expect phase one to be fully implemented?
So I think phase one, I'm always nervous about giving a date.
Roughly.
Right? But roughly, we're looking, I think, you know, we'll, once we launch our version of the product, which will be April, the deployment itself isn't going to take very long. So three months after that, so by mid-year, we'll have phase one completely implemented. But what'll happen is that we'll be able to do these in parallel, and that's why we'll speed things up. So phase two and three, we'll be able to do, you know, during the summertime, and then phase four, finish by the end of the year.
Create some kind of complication, because I think staff is holding up in terms of receiving applications for the other phases until it's ready. So, for example, they're only receiving application for phase one at this point. So once phase two is ready, and then three, four, and five, then you're gonna be, have a backlog towards the end of the year. So I don't know how staff will address that issue.
Well, we'll work with Keith's team to kind of get an idea as to when they'll roll out, and we'll start going out and promoting the other phases ahead of when they're gonna be done, so that we can process the applications.
Okay, because you don't wanna process the applications too soon.
Correct.
Nor too late.
Right, yeah, so it's gonna be a balancing act that we're...
Okay, that's gonna be a tough one, especially the last quarter for you. I kind of envision that.
Yeah, it's gonna be a challenge. There's ten thousand units that we have to get out there, and so we'll be hustling, that's for sure.
Right, okay, very good. Any question of Mr. Alexis? Oh, Councilmember Morse.
Sorry. For students, when, well, they have to have special permissions to access certain sites, so they have, like, with the school specifically, will you guys have to work with the school district? I know during COVID, when we were all wireless, we, my particular family had issues getting on certain places, like, and it was due to our network. So will you guys have to, not real technological, but...
Yeah, schools do require limiting, there's actually a child act, right, that specifically says, you know, children are not allowed to see certain things, et cetera. We will abide by those rules as well. Now, especially if those modems are given out through the school as well. Now, because we'll also have direct contact and monthly billing of every resident, even if that billing is zero amount, if that resident decides to call in and say, hey, you know, they want to remove this, they would have to sign a waiver to say, you know, they're the ones liable for this kind of content going into their residence. But the city still has the ability to override that and say, we don't want that content on any part of our network at the end of the day. So it's a roundabout answer, just to say, yes, you can give parents some level of control over what is accessed, but because it's a private city network, the city can definitely come back and say, you know, we want to eliminate that content on there.
When ours was specifically more like the turn it in, you know, like, we couldn't access, I think that's what it's called, turn it in.
Right.
And we couldn't access it, because the, it was being blocked.
Right.
So we had to then call the school and say, hey, he's trying to turn in his homework, but, you know, it's being blocked, whatever. So that's, I guess that was more where I was going with that.
Got it, got it. So specific applications, so our system works just like any other service provider system. So we can block or allow any traffic. So then this is part of the conversation that we need to have with the community and say, you know, from the school system, and say, okay, what needs to pass through, and what needs to be blocked? And we get that stamped by the school, by the school board first, and then we roll that out.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
No more questions.
Any other question?
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Dutton.
Thank you. Could you refer to slide, I think, at seven? Yes. On this slide, on the rainbow strip on the right side, where the dark blue is lower speeds, I'm guessing, that's how much speed it is, is relative, you know, and the red is fast. That's pertaining to what we see going down, I think this is Bellflower Boulevard here, with the red dot.
That's correct.
Center, and then it goes up to the greens, or whatever. And I guess that's the average of where the green dot is below, or above the rainbow strip. So it's, DBM is what that is. What's that stand for?
I'm sorry?
In the center, the center, was it D, the letter DBM?
Yes, it stands for the signal strength.
Okay, signal strength, okay, got it, but we're looking at the signal strength here, it's like one-third on the low side.
Right, so I apologize for the technical nature of it, is that, so how DBM works and signal strength works, it actually goes, the more, the more positive it is, right, then the smaller the negative number winds up being. So what we do is that we measure, we say, there's a minimum number of strength or receive signal we need to have. And so we set that first in our tool, which is where you're seeing that green dot. So we don't wanna see any blue or anything to the right of that. It means that there's too much of a weak signal. So then when we put all of the red dots in, all of those individual locations, we then understand, okay, although we may have signal further out than there, we don't wanna take those into consideration. So we know we need to place another access point and another access point further out.
Okay, 'cause, for example, it's what, you had a terminology for each of those repeaters or whatever, in each of those intersections. And then it only goes... I'm going to guess, three hundred feet, five hundred feet, I don't even see, this is the edge of the park lots for the business district.
You're correct, yeah, 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 each.
And so in the residential area, you got to put another one there, you got, that's as far as they go?
Oh, I'm sorry, so.
How does, how do you get the coverage for the whole town?
Right.
I'm looking at this little thing, it's like.
Yeah, you can't cover that much, right? So so what this really is representing is that, let me, let me go to this slide here. Is, so what you have, you see these, the little weird umbrella looking, you know, one sort of green, one sort of gray, and and a lot gray, but orange.
Okay, got it, yeah, okay, got it.
So the smallest signal is what is at the street level. And that's Wi-Fi. So Wi-Fi, much like when you go to Starbucks, and you leave Starbucks, you walk two, three feet outside of Starbucks, you really, you still can't get connected. So that's your smallest, so that's your three, outdoor, it's about three hundred feet, as as a matter of fact, exactly the the correct, right? You may get with higher antennas a little bit more. So we'll have that coverage for a lot of the main areas where someone may have their phone, they don't use their data. Um, they may be at a, at a, at eatery, they may be at Sims Park, those will be there. For the individual units that that a residential unit will actually connect to, these are the devices that we're using. These will actually go half a mile from a signal perspective.
So they go half a mile, that that house can sign up for it.
Exactly correct, exactly.
You have a receiver on that end, it receives it.
So it's just layers upon layers of um, different, different signal at the end of the day, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go to slide seven. I think that, okay, I have seven, that's okay. Flip to eight, and then find it near the nine, I mean, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. That's got to be before seven then. I'm looking for the the beeps, the beeps, the twenty, the fifty, the seventy-five, uh, twenty-five, the square boxes.
There we go.
There we go, okay. So when a customer decides they want to sign up, because basically this is a, it's relatively a discounted service over Frontier, AT&T, and it's subsidized with some of your advertisements on this internet is for people that don't know what we're doing. Is the residence going to be able to decide if they want to pay more for the the seventy-five versus the twenty-five? And this is what you have, only eighty-seven percent of the houses, sixty-nine is.
You're absolutely correct. So so it'll be a stepped program, there will be the the free subsidized um, program. And then.
And that's not based on income, right?
And that's.
Free.
Exactly, exactly. Um, but we're also not asking, like your traditional service providers, we're not asking for people's FICO scores and all of these other things either. So we want to try and make it as easy as possible for people to get online. Um, and then these other blocks, twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five, will be based on, you know, low income, but yet they they are able to pay or they want to upgrade to a faster speed.
Be subsidized or something like that. And then anybody can, you know, but the the highest is the seventy-five that you're going to be offering.
Exactly, that that is correct, that is correct. Now, you will also have, uh, you know, small businesses that, you know, bakery or something of the sort that wants to get to use, to use the system, they will be able to sign up for seventy-five meg system if they want to.
And that would be the limit for a business is the seventy-five?
There, it it won't be the limit of the network. It is initially for the first year, we are sort of limiting most of the bandwidth, just.
Till it grows into place. Yeah, gotcha.
Right, exactly. So however, it is able to, the whole network is able to upgrade, where we're able to do up to two hundred mags by two hundred mags. So faster speeds are definite. This is not, when we talk about sustainability, initially, yes, we'll be able to start here, but then gradually move that up as well.
Say this is up and running, and and you got the kinks worked out, citywide, the future of this, and everybody's been on an airport free internet or a amusement park free or hotels free internet, you know what I mean?
Yep, oh, absolutely.
You know, you're waiting for uploads and downloads, or just a homepage, sometimes you're just.
Yep.
How is this compared to those?
It's nowhere near. Um, so so there are, aside from the the ability to increase um, uh, performance on on an, on an individual basis, so if someone is seeing low performance, we could move them to different antennas, we can increase the bandwidth, we can move them to a different frequency, all of that technical stuff, right? One, we don't have other third-party traffic moving over that system. So, for example, Verizon, if Verizon is, you know, has a a modem in your home or in your business, they can actually pipe, if somebody's walking by that store, they will off, what's called offload, they'll let that person on your network, even though you're paying for it, and then suddenly now that takes up some of your bandwidth. So this is a completely closed network.
And it's basically because some of it's paid for too, so.
Exactly, correct, exactly.
The free stuff that we would allow our residents in our parks to connect, because they're going to be under, be able to get under the parks and recreation, be able to connect their phone, right?
Absolutely correct.
Would that be a a faster speed than the airports and and.
Yes, it would be.
Big entities like that, big open areas, campgrounds and stuff that have it, okay.
Exactly, exactly. And that's a conversation we can have with with the city. So 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 we've contracted with both Frontier and also Crown Castle. And so every location that we install um, within the city has the, it starts off with what with ref, from a reference standpoint, one gig, and then we can go to ten gigs at every location. And that's, you know, we have fifteen of these different locations throughout the city. And then our equipment supports two ten gigs um, at the end of the day. So we can actually support, even though we're we're looking to support ten to twenty thousand residents, the network ecosystem itself can actually support thirty thousand residents on the network at full speed.
At one time, yeah.
At one time, correct.
At this engineered plan. Until it grows, right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I get it, because you got to start somewhere.
Right.
So that was going to be my question there. So so you're buying internet from Frontier and which is fiber network.
That is correct.
And then the Crown?
Same thing with, same same with, yes.
You're buying bits in from, you know, come, I don't even know what to call it. Yeah, you're buying service from them.
Fiber, yeah, yeah.
And then reselling it for the community of Bellflower.
Correct.
So uh, that comes in at different points in the city, is that delivered through satellite or hard-wire hookup?
Hardwired fiber. Uh, as a matter of fact, each of the blue points that you see in each of these boxes represents one of the locations that we have that comes in. So Sims Park, for example, it'll have a hard fiber location into this building. We've already put in that hard fiber um, from Frontier as well. So that's wired um, into there.
So they're going to have three entry points within the city, and then it's going to get the whole city done? Is that what you're saying, or?
Three entry points, this, this is just phase one.
I'm all phase one, okay.
So three entry points into phase one, and then we take those three, and then we we use wireless to get everywhere else.
Gotcha. Okay, that's enough, my brain's exploding.
Okay, good, good questions. All right, thank you, Ray. You're okay, all right, very good. Any other question? Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Alexis, thank you so much for your presentation, okay?
Thank you.
We look forward to end of the year next year.
Absolutely, same here.
Or sooner.
Even better.
Okay, great. Thank you again. Uh, all right, next item, item number ten, uh, public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
Uh, please sign in and state your name.
Good evening, my name is Esther.
Uh, good evening, Esther.
I would like to address this uh, subject that we just talked about on the sustain uh, smart cities. And I will send you information on Agenda twenty-three and Agenda thirty by the World Economic Forum, which has smart cities on their agenda, AKA tracking digital imprisonment. This is a serious issue, and you need to be fully informed of all of the facts that's in in this uh, serious agenda. And I would like to have permission to give, to be given as much time as he was to uh, give a rebuttal as to why Bellflower uh, should reconsider these smart cities and what is actually on the other side that they're not telling you about. Also, the, the other reason I came to talk is because um, I sent all of you today uh, two videos to watch. Uh, it's called anti, the title is called antidote. And the, what they're putting in the vaccines is quite serious. So I would like, I wanted to give you the documentation on what is going inside the vaccines and the antidotes uh, for those uh, vaccines as well as for the virus. What exactly is in this virus? And what are the antidotes for the virus? And if I had more time, I would, I could give you a talk on that. But anyway, this involves the health of Bellflower, the health of Los Angeles, the health of our world. And this is a a great concern to me. So I would like all of Bellflower and all of Los Angeles, this is my region, to be informed so that we can be protecting ourselves and we know their uh, evil agendas, including smart cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Anyone else? Okay, moving along. Next item, um, there are no public hearings for this evening, there are no ordinances or resolutions for consideration. And we have one consideration item, item thirteen A, Mr. Stewart.
This is a consideration possible, I should consider modification application from one existing cannabis business permit for dispensary use at N C three Systems, Inc. at nine, nine five three five Artesia Boulevard. This was continued from November thirteenth, and I believe Mr. Seis has a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As Mr. Stewart mentioned, this item was continued from the last regular City Council meeting on November thirteenth. Um, this was to allow the applicant to provide additional ownership information requested um, specifically by Mayor Santa Inez. And the applicant has since provided that additional information and is now available to answer any questions on that additional available information. And um, just to provide some background on that additional available information, um, at the last council meeting, the org chart was provided for the new ownership group, Gold Flora, and about forty-six percent of the ownership was not accounted for in that org chart. So that's where the question came about, was whether um, who is that additional ownership that possesses ownership of forty-six percent of Gold Flora? So we have Greg Gamet here again with us tonight to answer any questions that the the City Council may have.
All right, before we do that, do we need to swear him in? Okay, is anyone else would like to speak on this item? If there's any chance you may speak on this item, um, you can be sworn in. Okay, we have two. Go ahead, the City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, you have to be sworn in first. You have to be sworn in first.
If you can please raise your right hand. Raise your right hand, thank you. Uh, do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give in the matter pending before the City Council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Did you say yes, Esther?
I just, yes, my name is Esther, I just wanted to say, I I would like to know all of the information because you, you know, you invite the public to have, to have a say-so. But the last time when he got to speak, I didn't have all of the information, and neither did you. So I'd like to have all the information and then be, and then be allowed to to consider it and then allowed to see if I want to, uh, allowed to speak on it, to speak to it.
Depending on the, there's the agenda, so you have I I, the items on the agenda, you have the back of documentation. All right, so.
We're at, we're at bat again, hopefully I don't get another strike here. I appreciate your patience.
Okay, so what do we have for this evening?
Well, um, the, in the information that was sent over, we, you wanted to get to a hundred percent ownership, so we.
Doesn't that make sense, though?
Yeah, it does, it makes perfect sense. And not that, since I wasn't here the first being, uh, the second one, I was a little bit blindsided, and I apologize for not being um, ready and and wasting your time. It was kind of nice, though, not to get off subject, to hear about you and the new guy coming in. It was kind of, kind of neat to hear that stuff, because, you know, we all like our city governments. I don't live here particularly, but we do have businesses here, so I like, I like the route you're going there. So Emily, who is a corporate lawyer, and does ownership structures, sent Travis here, and thank you, Travis, for your help of of every shareholder that owns down to, you know, I see one here with eight shares. So that that's worth about sixty cents right now, maybe sixty cents right now, eighty cents, uh, on up to the the bigger ones. So I think the biggest question was, okay, here's your above five percent owners, which is at fifty-seven percent, and your below five percent owners, which is at forty-three percent, which, you're an accountant, you know, that equals a hundred. Um, and we even listed out the only four shareholders that are over five percent uh, on the, on the list here, which is um, of course, Gold Flora Capital, Canaccord, G R H P Investments, and C D and Co. I, I'm here to answer questions, I hopefully, if you do have questions, I can answer them.
Okay. Any que, any question of the applicant or representative of the applicant?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I have a couple of questions for you. Uh, the information that you provided is much better.
Thank you.
This time around, so I, I wish we had this information on the first public hearing.
Hey, me too.
Okay, so anyway, just to make sure that I understand this completely, the information you provided to staff was, um, there is a total of two hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-one, six hundred twenty-two shares issued and outstanding. I want to, I want you to confirm that under penalty of perjury. Is that the number total shares?
Just best if I acknowledge that is the correct number.
Two eight, two eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Two ninety-one, six two three.
Yes.
Okay, and the listing you gave to staff under penalty of perjury, you certified that that's a complete list?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question, so I'm very satisfied.
All right, thank you.
Again, remember, you're, you're under oath, okay?
Yes, I do, I do enjoy these meetings, I just might be back just to watch a couple from time to time, but.
Again, I wish they had the information on the first day.
Hey, no problem.
And we would avoid this postponement.
I, I enjoy this whole process, so I'm, I do.
Very good, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That was easy. All right.
That's the third time. It's a charm.
All right, moving along, we are moving to consent calendar, uh, does anyone?
Wait, I make.
Oh, oh, that's right, that's right. I get so excited. All right, uh, any, any, any comments about this item? Thirteen A. All right, Esther, you.
Well, I haven't seen it, so I'm, are, are you, something you're, we're going to vote on?
Yeah, we're going to vote on that.
Yeah, so I would just like to see the information.
It's on the agenda, but uh, in terms of City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the the list, the individual listing of shareholders is not available to the public.
That is true.
So we're going to share it with you.
So it's not available? Or it is, or it's not?
It is not available to the public.
What's available to the public is on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
Approve the modification application for one existing cannabis business permit for dispensary uh, use for N C three Systems, Inc. Uh, DBA deli by Cavaliva uh, at ninety-five thirty-five Artesia Boulevard.
Motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Mayor Protem Koops, to approve the modification application of um, N C three Systems, Inc. All right, any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Aye. All right, congratulations. All right. Yeah, next item. Now, you know what to do next time, if you have, if there's any other change.
See you next year. Yeah.
Are we going to see you December fourteenth?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
I'm going to see you December fourteenth.
December fourteenth, all right. All right, next item, number fourteen, consent calendar. Does anyone have any, any conflicts on the consent calendar?
No.
No conflicts?
Nope.
Wow. Okay, does anyone want to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Oh.
No? Wow, okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Koops, seconded by Councilmember Morse, to approve the consent calendar, a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Aye. All right, moving along, council reports, uh, Mayor Protem Koops.
I have nothing to report, although I want to uh, explain how glad I am that we celebrated a nice Thanksgiving event, and the city had a few days off to recharge their batteries. And as we approach the holiday season, I think that. And as we approach the holiday season, I think that we're going to have this tree lighting come Friday night. And that's always a big event, about three thousand people show up for that. And the mayor will be in fine form, conducting Santa's entrance into the Boulevard. And we're looking forward to that, Sunny.
All right, all right, good. Councilmember Dutton?
Not much to say either, just come play in the snow and bring your kids for this Friday for our Christmas tree lighting.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Morse?
I have nothing, I am looking forward to Friday night's events.
Okay, all right, me too, I'll see you on Friday. And just one, one comment, I just want to again thank all those who participated in the photo contest. If you have noticed, the the winning photos are on display in the glass case of the lobby. We have three winners in the adult division and three winners in the youth division. So take advantage of that, I was very impressed with the quality of work that were submitted for the photo contest being the first time this year. Again, it was very impressive. So with that, we will see you on Friday at the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, this meeting is now adjourned.